All right, it's now 7:30. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 5th meeting of the Village Board. We'll start proceedings with the motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from September 21st, 2023.
Vote.
Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens' comments. If you have anything to address the board, please come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and what's on your mind here. Okay. Nobody wants to address us. They just want to hear us. Mark, you don't have anything to say? Okay. Trustees' comments. We'll start with Megan.
Just the agenda for me today.
Eric?
I have a couple items to add to the agenda. The first resolution I'd like to add is to authorize work on the Village Hall office file server to enhance the server and data backup for work not to exceed $2,500. This is, we can talk about a bit more when it comes up as far as the purpose of that book.
Okay.
The second item I'd like to add is to move the right-of-way on Lot Street PDD to approximately 10 feet south of the sidewalk.
No, the existing right-of-way line to a point south of the sidewalk.
Sorry, the existing right-of-way line to a point approximately 10 feet south of the sidewalk. No, just south.
10 feet from the existing line.
10 feet from the existing.
We'll move it approximately 10 feet to the other side of the sidewalk. Okay. That's item C. You're on a roll.
And I'll take the agenda for the rest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nate?
I'd like to add an item to the agenda. This will be under D for new business. I'd like to have a motion to remove Greg Humphries from part-time employment within the codes in the Village Board.
Okay.
And outside of that, I will stick with the agenda.
Very good. Our agenda has grown. Ruth?
Just the agenda, basically.
Michael?
Brief executive session for contractual manner.
Maybe? Executive session. Attractional. Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Bruce?
I think I'll stick to the new agenda.
All right. Got a few items here. Sheet of paper. I wrote things down. I was so organized today, and I'm not. A lot of stuff to give people a heads-up on as far as Halloween, which is October 31st. We celebrate it from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Village. If you don't want people to come to your door, we ask you to just turn your porch light off. If you do want people to come, put the light on. And we ask everybody to remember that there are little kids walking in the street and it's getting dark. Please be patient. The Ghost Walk is Friday, October 20th, Saturday, October 21st, 6:00 to 10:45 each night. That's the Baldwinsville Art School puts that on if you have any questions. I believe that item is on our Facebook site. The 21st of October in the morning is an old tradition in the Village. I love to see the window painting. The kids paint up all the business windows. If you want to have your windows painted, you need to contact, and this is what I can, I may find this before the night's over. But it's the Town Life Standard Parks and Recreation. So if you have any questions, call there and they will tell you how to get your business on the list because there will be a PDF file for people to say, here's the windows that are available, sign up for one of them. Also, that day, the Chamber of Commerce is having their trick-or-treat at the businesses. If you're a business and you want to sign up, again, call the Chamber of Commerce. Kids paint windows and then they go door-to-door from businesses and get candy in the daylight with their costumes on so you get a chance to see them. At the same time, Community West End Church on Downer Street has a trunk-or-treat activity on Saturday, October 28th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the parking lot. It's free. It's open to the public and you can bring kids in and there'll be people who have their back of their vehicle open with candy and stuff like that. And then, again, Halloween is the 31st. And just please ask people to be safe. That's our biggest concern. Did get a nice note from Kathy Olson, lives on Crego Street, commending that beautiful pots of flowers throughout the Village. They've been watered and maintained so well and added the beauty of our community. A job well done. Very excited to say that's about the 15th or 20th comment like that that I've received. Obviously, the flowers this year were over big. And then the Presbyterian Church having a hand-in-dinner this Saturday, October 7th, from 4:00 to 5:30. You come in on the Elizabeth Street side of the church and come through and pick up your meal. Let's see if there's anything else. I also would like to take this time to announce to people in the community that I will be stepping down as mayor as of September, as of November 30th. It's a physical, you know, body that causes me to do this. I'm like an athlete who just can't get up and down the field anymore. I can, I still can think of the job, but it hurts to do the physical part of it. And sometimes that means trying to get out of bed in the morning and it hurt. So it was not an easy decision. I certainly thought about it for many long weeks. And it was only fair to people to get that out in the public. It's fair to the board who has to make some decisions now on how to progress, that they have the freedom to talk to people and not worry about letting the cat out of the bag. So still have a lot of work to do for another, basically, two months. I don't plan on slacking off. And again, it's not something that I was, I'm excited about, although I am excited about maybe not having the pressure of dealing with the physical part of it. So I wanted to get that out. I appreciated the people that knew, who have kind of kept it quiet because I was kind of waiting for the moment to do it and tonight seemed like the best time. This item is on the agenda about my hours and days and stuff for retirement. I had nothing to do with this. This was something that Jody had given me before. It had to be worked out. The state keeps track of your retirement time, how many hours you work a week as an elected official. And it basically had down for several of us that we had zero hours in for like the last year, which means you get no credit towards retirement at all. So this is, this motion is a culmination of that process of catching up on what I did for, I had to keep track for three months of every phone call, every email that I sent, basically, so that they could keep track of how many hours they put in a week on the job. So, all right, I'm done. You've heard enough out of me. Move to the Department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob. Welcome back from Italy. Clark, Jody?
I'll just stick to the agenda, thank you.
Okay. Treasurer, Mark.
Just one thing. Tomorrow or Tuesday, we're going to close on that bond for that snowplow truck, the first of two that we bought. 137,7 is the amount, $137,772 is the amount at 4.5% interest. You've already approved it and everything. We have all the paperwork and we just need to sign out the papers. So an important thing for the board to keep in mind during budget time is this will add roughly $50,000 a year to the budget for the next three years. The good news is that this year we retired debt of about, I don't know what the payment was, but it was about, probably about $80,000 or $85,000 a year. So we're ahead of the game. In the spring, I'm told from Chuck that there'll be another truck that will arrive. And that's the one that we've got a small grant from the state to help us pay for that. But we'll bind for that one also, and I think we'll push that one out another year. We'll see what all the numbers look like at the time, but this was very doable. And I keep encouraging Chuck, you got other equipment that is 27 years old with the floorboards coming out of it. Let's get it taken care of and, you know, so that we can maintain the service and we'll figure out a way to make it happen.
So people appreciate that when the trucks are running, pushing snow around this winter.
Yeah, this truck is like, I think Chuck said it'll be here any day. It's in the lower pool or whatever, being outfitted with all the other stuff they put on it. But the other one is not in town, to my knowledge. It's still being manufactured. So.
Very good. Thanks, Mark. We'll move across the room to the senior center, Ruth.
Just a few things. First, I want to thank Treasurer Mark Baker, who attended the Canton Woods meeting this morning and shared with them the proposed Canton Woods Village budget for 2024 and answered any question that folks there had. Also, happy to share that Superintendent Public Works, Chuck McCullough, informed me that the Andover County is going to provide funding to pave the walking trail that we've been hoping to do behind the senior center. And we want to thank County Legislature Brian May, who was instrumental in helping locate funds to make that happen. So we are excited about that and very much appreciate it. Also, seems like it's early, but it isn't. The rescue mission has deadlines out for the holiday meals. They'll be doing the home-delivered meals this year for people that are homebound, elderly. You need to be home on the actual holiday. So the deadline for Thanksgiving is November 1st. You just have to call the senior center, talk to the neighborhood advisor, and she will take care of it from there. But that deadline's November 1st if you're interested. And the Christmas one is December 4. And I just want to let the board know that we had a very successful vaccine clinic on Wednesday, the 27th. We did 100, well, we didn't. RightAid provided 153 immunizations to folks. So 85 people came and received 153 immunizations. And RightAid was very gracious and stayed an hour beyond the scheduled time to accommodate everyone. So that went very well. And there will be another opportunity in October, on October 25th, which is also a Wednesday from 10 to noon. Come on in and take care of that if you didn't do so already. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Ruth, what immunizations did they provide?
They did the gamut. They did the most recent COVID that's available, the flu, RSV.
Did the RSV also?
Pneumonia and shingles. I mean, and the, for the most part, there was two people available to administer the shots. And COVID was the most popular, then flu, and then down from there. But I think people really appreciated being able to come in to a comfortable setting, you know, and get what they needed. And the pharmacist was wonderful, answered a lot of questions that people had. So I thought it went really well and hopefully we'll see a big turnout again on the 25th.
And I think the last time you mentioned, is this restricted only to seniors?
Well, as I said before, when Megan asked that, I think if you come in and you would like a vaccine, they're going to take care of you because the goal is to have people immunized as best for all of us.
Right. Thank you. Very good. That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a nice treat tonight representing the Public Works. We have our water foreman. Sure. Where do you want to call it?
The water guy.
You've called yours.
Been doing a lot of work up in the Round Track Indian Springs with repairing water valves. We've got about seven done so far. We got another four to go. I've always been pretty helpful with that on the waterside. The highways also on their brush schedule every week. Other than that, I don't have anything great. Everything's going pretty good on the insurance side. We're doing a great job.
You're with everything, Greg.
Those valves that are going, were installed in 1961.
Oh, wow.
So 52 years old. Is that right?
60.
60?
60.
Police Department, we have Jason Nguyen.
Jason. She's clubbing check. Apologize, he's a little under the weather tonight, so he can't make it. But he didn't give me of anything of importance, so.
This is your chance. You can say anything you want. We'll circle it. All right, move on. We have pending business. We have nothing tonight. New business. Motion to establish 6.60 days as the standard workdays per month for Mayor Richard Clark per record of activities maintained and submitted by him at the request of New York State and local employees' retirement system. This will be the number of days reported to the retirement system each month for him.
Motion.
Second. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, item B. All right, you want to read that motion? Can I get you to make that motion?
Resolution to authorize work on the Village Hall offices' files server to enhance the server and data backup for work not to exceed $2,500.
I'll second that motion. For discussion. Mark, can you explain a little bit to the board what's going on with this?
Yeah, so there's a file server that the accounting system, the water sewer billing system, the Microsoft Office apps, all you use, email you use. And you were digging into the water sewer billing system, how to improve its performance a little because there's a ton of data on it going back like 20 years and just, and I started asking, how's that get backed up? Because there's no inherent backup in it like there are in the others. And they were like, no, it doesn't. You have, it goes with the server backup. I'm like, okay. So I called John Harder, a guy, and said, how's the server backup at work? And he's like, um, and I went. So he immediately sent me a link and said, I've been meaning to talk to you about that. We need to, you know, we need to get a backup going on that. And I think he thought each of those systems backed up to the cloud and the rest of them all do. So like the accounting system backs up to the vendor. This one does not. So it's like a dodged bullet. But so he's got what they call bare-model backup, which is that that server will be almost instantly recoverable once there's another physical machine, if something happened to it. And then, so it's a good thing to do. It's a necessary thing to do. I think it's much less than 15, 2,500, but my intention would be to get the work done and then come back to you with a budget mod proposal and we would modify the budget from the contingency budget. And I will tell you though, the long-term thought is to eventually eliminate that server and put all those systems in the cloud so that they work from anywhere and employees could get files from anywhere. You know, Joey's up at DPW and says, somebody says, I need this file from you. She doesn't have to come back down here and do it. She could just log in with her phone or whatever, a laptop up there and grab the file and all that kind of stuff. And it's, believe it or not, the cloud is far more secure than a server in that office in there for a lot of reasons.
It's where we keep you around.
Well, it's just, it's just kind of a best practice kind of thing. But we got a lot of research to do before that to make sure all those systems perform okay, people can use them in the cloud, okay, all that kind of stuff, before you convert over to that.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C. This is a lot street. Anybody want to make that motion on moving the line back 10 feet? Who made this originally?
So.
Eric tried.
I butchered that before.
Give it another shot.
I don't know if you wanted, Greg and I are here. We were met with the planning board and just wanted to give a background as to how this came to be. So the applicant.
Do that before or after the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, you make the motion and then I'll.
Yeah, then we have to, then we ask you.
Or you bomb the rules.
So Eric, you want to try to make that motion? You're getting good at this.
I'll make a motion to move the right-of-way on the lot street PDD. Was it approximately?
Approximately 10 feet south. The backside of the sidewalk.
Backside of the sidewalk there.
I'll say that.
Or she will. Or somebody will. All right. Jamie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can stand at the mic. Tell everybody who you are.
Jamie Supfen, Baldwin Supfen, attorneys. And I work with the planning board mainly, so some of you haven't seen me before. Some of you have. So we had a meeting and the applicant and James Trashers is here. He was representing El Barichi and the group that did the Phobes Island. Came in with a map to get final plans. So they're in the phase where they're going to do the single-family dwellings. And in the course of reviewing those documents, it, I guess, one of the things that happened was during the save the rain, some kind of grant, whatever, the parking spaces end up being on the property of the Phobes Island people. And Chuck didn't like that. And Greg didn't like it. And it seemed like not a very good practice. So in the course of doing that, it was also noted, although this was planned, that the sidewalks are also on the property of the Phobes, the owners. And again, Chuck didn't really like that, even though that's the way it was planned. We would get an easement for maintenance and it just seemed best practices. And this was the recommendation of the planning board, that the, that the line of the street be moved so that the sidewalk plus the parking spaces, so that the village can maintain them. And the utilities that happen to also be in that strip of land, go to the village, move that lot line. And what I had said at the planning board meeting is, we can't just do that. We can't just say to the village, now you have to take this land and it has to be yours and has become part of the street. So that's why that came here. So they're looking for an answer on that. Then we have a special planning board meeting on Tuesday. Everything is not quite expedited because apparently there are people who are ready to close these lots. And the rates are escalating and the lock rates are going down the tubes. So we're trying to accommodate that. Greg, do you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, and some of the other discussions that was above and beyond that was relative to the trail which runs along the river between lots five and 10. There's 10 residential, there's, I guess, there's 10 residential lots. There's four more that the trail is not run between the river and the homes. There was a plan, but the other ones are on there. The developer was under the impression that those had taken out at some point in time. He could not find anything to add effect the plans that aren't filed as approved show that trail between water and the homes on lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And that trail connects to Wood. And there's two more to connect to, I forgot the map or.
Do you have the large map? There's a map here, so everyone can see it.
So there was some discussion as to the potential removal of that trail between those lots, lot five, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And the planning board voted in favor of having those removed, but that's requires the Village Board to take in on that and decide if they want to make that change to the plan.
Trails on the original plan approved in 2015. Memorialized in the PDD that's in our codebook.
The only thing I would point out, Bruce, is that the trail that's shown actually goes up to Woods.
Correct.
But the words in the code do not show going up to Woods.
It doesn't terminate it anywhere. It says along the river, trail along the river.
So here, James Trashers, CHA, representing Phobes Island LLC, J L Barichi and Sons with me tonight is Kevin Hamlin and actually the potential lot owners of lot number eight. So in this history of everything, and I can go back and, you know, I can say Greg went looking for stuff and people in the code's office went looking. So first building was constructed, and I'll rotate it around here, large building. And the whole timetable, and this was in 2015, first building got approved, constructed, and then there was a time delay. 2017, there was conversations and John Langley from Castello Cune and Furin, who was representing, the developer, was working with legal about, you know, the completion of future sections of the project. So I go to the plans and we're not into taking stuff off the plans unless there's been conversation and dialogue. And I only use this in terms of revision blocks and when we're doing stuff. In 2015, when things were approved, there'll be revision blocks noted, village, county, village, county, village, county. As we continued on through the process in terms of sanitary sewers and other things that were reviewed by the village engineer, there was modifications of adding plans and profiles for water, removing, so then the comments of removing a trail in hydrants and then another thing of adding sanitary plans and profiles. So this for the last six-plus years has been off the plans with connection points to Mark and Tabor circling up and nothing behind the sections of lots five to 10. So in the codebook, there may be something, but we're coming here as a developer saying, you know, if it is there and the village wants it, it can be put in and constructed. I live in Radisson. There's walking trails behind the backyards. But in this scenario, where you have a sidewalk in the front, a house built, area being cleared down to the river, and then a walking trail that would traverse here, you'd really have people looking in your front window and back window. And Radisson, when you're walking, those walking trails have trees and stuff between. So I'm not walking down the trail and saying, hello, Mayor Clark, you know, hello, Attorney Baldwin, as you're, they're sitting on their couch watching TV from here with a walking trail as shown. So I believe that is why it was removed previously. Stuff that was constructed in terms of the apartment homes and the apartments, you know, walking trail would continue on. It would be, it would come up to Margaret as shown. It would come up to Tabor as shown. These plans here, and it would just terminate and not go behind the six single-family residential lots. It would still people, give people the ability to see the river and certain things. But in these ones, these are rentals versus owned and managed by the El Barichis. The other ones are single-family homes. And the conversation at the village, you know, planning board was people coming out of the backyards with little kids playing and having someone standing on the walking trail five feet away or a dog coming out. So we were respectfully request it, you know, as part of the conversation, if the rest of the walking trail needs to be looped before the rest of the units are done, the El Barichis would have no problem coming in, constructing, so people within the village can continue down along the river's edge and tie back up into the section. That comes to Tabor, so you have a completed loop. We think it's a benefit, you know. You're buying some new plow trucks. We'd love to get a new home in and paying village taxes. Kevin Hamlin would love to sell five more houses there and then help offset the $50,000 that you're going to look to raise next year by putting in six new folks. This is something, you know, I think, believe in time, the El Barichis have been a good neighbor and a good developer in the village. They try to do the best they can. We think it's added value along the river. So, you know, we're willing to give up the right-of-way. This was done and we're willing to give that 10 feet of land, which is not an issue. The two big buildings, because there's currently financing on those, we've gone to Pathfinder Bank and they will be willing to release that section from the mortgage because that section of land, it may take a little bit longer between legal and legal to get that release. The remainder, remainder of the right of way that goes from the edge of the apartment building down to the end of Lock Street where it turns up to Woods, can be done immediately. The folks in the next, Kevin in the back, are the homeowners looking to move into lot eight. They were supposed to close by the 18th of October, and we appreciated the planning board scheduling a special meeting. We did get a one-month extension with Pathfinder Bank, so it gave them a little bit more time. Holding interest rates, if everyone sees, they might go up to 8%. So, you know, it's a tough time to continue to sell houses. They've been successful in doing it, and we would just ask for your approval on the right of way, which we're willing to do. And then if the village board is the one who has to approve not having a trail on this section, we would request that as well. The majority of the planning board was in agreement with it, and we would ask the same from the village board.
The plan would be to curl sidewalk up to Wood Street?
No.
Just end it?
Up to Tabor. I can tell you that Tabor wouldn't go.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, okay, got you. Maybe go up to Tabor, that's what I have to say.
Yeah, we bring it up to.
It's the reason why I just use lots walk all the way to the river.
What do you mean?
They are.
They are. The trail actually goes.
The trail bisects.
So the trail kind of goes into their property?
Correct. It cuts the lot in two, so like.
In easement, along the river, it would have expansion information on the yeth trail down to the end of lot.
Is that in any way like consistent with any other property that we have around here? Like lots that go into the river, go into the river outside of maybe like Water Street, which is actually a street? Or a river or whatever.
What are you, what are you asking now?
I'm asking for the fact of the matter is that, you know, is there any other properties that we have that are waterfront properties that have an easement that goes in their backyard?
All the other properties the community has kept out of.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest stretch would be West Genesee Street. I don't think those sidewalks go up there. Yeah, I understand the concern of the people that are going to build down there. I mean, originally, our hope was, there had been talk for years about running a trail all the way along behind Clinton Heights and all the way down to Long Branch. And that would, this trail would be a connector to get to that. But we've, we've done that over on Meadow Street with a trail up to the road, around a couple of properties and back down. So I mean, it's not like it's unheard of for us to make concessions to property.
Of course, the plan is to move the trail down to the river there also.
Yeah.
The people that are renting those properties aren't renting down.
But I mean, it's, I can kind of see where people that are going to build are would not want that sidewalk going through their backyard.
And we're talking, and the length of this, we're talking 300 to 350 linear feet. You know, the lot that's in the back, 63, 50, 65, 49, you know. So we're talking about moving out to this point, bringing it back here. And there's future land out here, and then it peels off and it gets into areas where you can't even get back down to the waterfront just because of the flood plains and the wetlands in those areas. So, you know, we, as I said, it was at the planning board, if it was a condition of the approvals, this section of trail, so people who are currently walking up and work through the parking lot on the apartment buildings, because it hasn't been completely looped, they're willing to come in and finish off the trail section, loop them up, have the connection point that goes in at Margaret and at Tabor, complete the trail.
How soon?
What?
How soon?
Well, they could start construction, and it's just right now asphalt, you know, picking up asphalt. And this year would be spring of, you know, 2024, you know. And the, and the village can hold the security for the cost of that work, so, you know, the work would be completed.
I do want to add that I did call Steve D'Arcangelo. So on the planning board level, the only, only person who was around when this happened was Terry, right? And I was there, and kind of neither of us really, you know, like remembers it all that well. We only remember what's written. So I called Steve and he doesn't, he was very gracious enough to return my call and say, he said, to be honest, you know, if I, I had to say, I know we talked about it a lot. We talked about, you know, was it right to have a trail across the, these properties? But he said he also did not remember or remember it, you know, if it was changed or anything like that. So, and I know the other thing, I believe that Kevin Hamlin had wanted to, to speak about the value.
It's for, like, for example, clients that are currently in a contract to buy the property. They're going to, it's a safety issue for them, for people to be able to walk down in the middle of the night and be able to see at their house and potentially go up to their house. And it's going to affect the value of what can own those properties if we can even sell them with the trail walking behind because of the, those issues for insurance. And who owns, they're going to own on one side of the sidewalk and the other side of the sidewalk, but not the sidewalk. So I don't know what that does for insurance purposes and that type of stuff. It just, it creates, in my opinion, a safety issue for the owners going there. And I, you know, I think that's going to be a hardship on the people.
Has the HOA been established yet? Pardon me? Has the HOA been established yet that once again was agreed upon in 2015?
HOA?
Who's going to take care of the sidewalks and?
Sidewalks are all taken care of by, you know, the sidewalks along the road are all taken care of by the single family. All the other stuff is taken care of by the owner of the complex. So here, everything here is plowed and maintained by J. El Berici and Sons. Same would happen in this section. The single family is all taken care of by, just like.
The middle section was supposed to be a blend, continued owned by El Berici and some that were sold.
Okay?
Right. That has not happened.
That hasn't happened yet.
That was the intention, right?
There's a section of townhomes that are, I don't have that section in terms of units plotted out. Actually, yeah, but up there, these ones were townhomes.
And that's where the HOA would come in, like?
Are those rented or are those for sale?
They could, they would be for sale.
For sale.
But they could also be rented as well.
I think that's where the HOA comes in.
Yeah, because always the interior.
If there was an owner that wouldn't need it, but if there's going to be separate owners of it.
So if that's the case, we have attorneys who have to deal with that.
Right, but that's not ready for being built?
No.
Don't wait till someone, don't wait till someone comes to buy, so we.
So there's other things I'll just use that we, and I learned at the last village board, our planning board meeting was that the approval of a single-family residential look, so the houses needed to be approved by the planning board. You know, in the history of doing single-family residential development, I've never brought a single-family residential house to a planning board for approval. So the statement was, you know, on the remaining five, we can do that if need, because they thought it would be easier than trying to change something, so.
So you've got a revision note there regarding trails, but there's no literature backup that instructed you for that revision?
Me? I tell you, I write emails where stuff went back and forth. So I just use, you know.
Back and forth between who?
Steve D'Arcangelo. So when we were doing this work, you know, in the comments that go on to the bottom. So I'm trying to relive stuff six years ago, just like other folks are reliving stuff. So added water and sewer plan and profiles, you know, that was done in 2017. So February, then remove walkway at rear of lots five to 10 and three fire hydrants. That was done in three, 2017.
So it's got to be some literature behind that.
Revised sanitary water main location and profile, 517. So I'll just use, Paul Yornell in my office was the one who did this work. Paul Yornell retired. So talking to Paul Yornell about what was done. So I'm taking, you know, old files, unarchiving, trying to read emails and those type of things to get the history. The best history that we had is there was a lot of dialogue between the village and the attorneys as related to the future construction of Phase Two of this project and when things would be completed.
And this is all, would you say, the village, planning board level of the village?
I would think when you get into the sewer and to the water mains type of stuff, that would have been with, at the end of the day, dedication of stuff back to you. So, you know, when we were doing stuff, a lot of the stuff was working with the village engineer, you know, head of, you know, Department of Public Works at that time, where, you know, going back and forth on what was wanted to be done, needed to be done. And at the same time, we were also doing the Save the Rain project that did the widening of the road, the storm system, the purview of pavement, the granite curbs, which was in conjunction with the developer out there as well. So.
What are we, what are we talking about, time-wise urgency? This is really kind of the first we've heard this discussion and.
You can see there's a house standing out there that's ready to close. We came in for final plat, which was approved with a condition upon the walking trail. Because it came back was, is it in or is it out? So we sent the information over. And then a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Shapiro called me and said, hey, there's a planning board meeting two nights. So Mr. Sutphen, Mr. Shapiro and I had a conversation, can you make the meeting and come in? So we went through, had the conversation with the planning board that night. And so then some of these other items, like the right of way width and movement stuff came up, and we talked about the walking trail. And that's where a raise of hands, you know, because they officially couldn't make the motion that night until this, the situation with the right of way line was done. But four were in favor of removing the walking trail on the lots. And so they believed it was under their purview, under the planning board review to remove it. Well, you shake your head, I'm just telling you what they said that evening. And, and so the item that we had to come here where they weren't comfortable approving it was the change of the right of way. And they, so that was why we're here, is that they can't take, make the village accept a section of road that's going to have, you know, financial potential burdens on the road, the pavement and that type of stuff that you would not take ownership of. There's liabilities. So they have a closing date on the 18th, that's what it was. So it got extended, cost $6,000. The El Berici's paid the $6,000 to extend the, the time one month. So we have till November 18th with the bank. We were hoping to get everything resolved tonight, so that on the 11th?
Is it the 11th?
Next Tuesday, the 11th, the planning board scheduled a special meeting to approve. And then the next day, Jeff.
Tuesday the 10th or Wednesday the 11th?
Tuesday, whatever Tuesday is.
10th.
Tuesday, the 10th. They have a special meeting at 7:00. Next day, we'll go to the county health department after it got approved, signed by the planning, acting planning board chair. Jeff Till, the county health department will sign off, we'll go to Lisa Dell for filing, and then attorneys could do their closings. So that was our hope.
The, the meeting still isn't on the calendar as of this afternoon.
Because I, I mean, to me, the right of way is not a huge question. The pushing it 10 feet south to include the sidewalk and stuff. To me, that kind of makes sense. But the other thing is kind of new as far as, I mean, Chuck mentioned one day that was talking about it. But I haven't, I mean, the planning board sent nothing on to us to say, we've recommended this and any of that type of thing. So I'm thinking that for some of our board members, this is the first time they've heard this discussion. And maybe, maybe it's cut and dry. I don't know what everybody's thinking. Anybody got any thoughts?
I don't think it is, because, I mean, Bruce has the, the code. And the code specifically notes the plans that were noted in, what is it, November of?
Number 50.
Of 2015. And they clearly show the trail going all, all the way down and curving up towards Woods. So to me, that is what is in our local law. So it's not just a.
And so a modification of that comes back for this part?
So in your, in the local law, is there a revision date? Because I'm going to use the plans of, with the revision blocks on here. The plans are outdated in November 2015. Typically, when there's an approval, it's based on, you know, the latest revision date being X, Y, or Z. So I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, I'm just using, if I gave you the, I gave Chuck my full, Fred, my half. Fred, do you have the 11 by 17 sub, both of things?
Can we amend the local law without a public hearing?
No. So there needs to be publication and then.
So we won't be able to do it tonight anyways?
No. But I guess that you can get consensus of the board just to.
I mean, I personally want to hear from the public, you know, if they have opinions on that, because this is certainly. We're talking about a public walking trail. You know, if the general public is willing to give up that walking trail along the river, that's one thing. I certainly want to hear from the public before making a determination on this one way or the other.
So that's, James, that's listed as local law. We can't, we can't change local law without a public hearing.
So in there, I'm just, not having read it, I didn't realize it was already on the codebook, so.
The only thing that's not written is the, is that about it going up to Woods. It doesn't mention Tabor and Margaret.
But it mentions it being accessible. I think when we were reading it earlier, that there'd be access from Tabor and Margaret. But to me, the intention was that the trail itself would run the length of the PDD.
Have you got the wording there, Bruce?
Your walkway titled asphalt recreational trail along the Seneca River. That sounds defined. Doesn't say starting anywhere or ending anywhere.
And that's for the PDD?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that portion of the PDD.
I think the beauty of the PDP as far as what Bruce just said, when you still have access to Woods by going up Tabor and the other one. I know in the back of my father's house along Meadow Street, that trail does let it go down to farm, but it hasn't come back through. It does snake through in the school, through his backyards. But when it, when it does happen, that comes out to Meadow Street in there, in front of their yards. You asking, is this an anomaly in Woodne? I don't know anywhere else in the village where there's a walking trail behind some of these.
We'll have to determine the reading of that, whether that says, I mean, it's hard to tell whether it's indicating all the way through, which is what I honestly believe at the time when we put that all together. It was my feeling in talking with Steve D'Arcangelo that he felt that trail should run all the way to the end. I mean, because people are going to be walking, it should walk all the way to Wood Street. That was his intention. Now, he got the planning board, but.
I believe it was the trustees that sat and met with James, Kevin, and Joe one night when we hammered a lot of this out. That was what our intentions were. Can't bring Mark in here.
No, but he would remember as well as anybody.
He's probably got notes.
And I can, I can reach out to the, because I'm using the time period of when, when we sat in that room over there was the negotiations about the timetable and stuff. And that's in the same timetable as the revisions that were going on with the plans. So, you know, there was a February email from John Langley to your attorney in regards to dialogue back and forth as it relates to, you know, dates for completion of different.
My concern is that revisions were made at the planning board level. But when revisions are made to a site plan, which is in the PDD, it has to come back here to accept those revisions.
I don't know that revisions were made. I don't think they were made at planning board.
I don't think they were made at this board.
Yeah, no, I, I think what he's saying is that there were revisions made. So the November plan is the only plan that is noted in this code. There were some revisions because there were discussions and the engineering changed things and so forth. I don't have any recollection of that myself. Steve really didn't. So I guess it's back at this board to say, I guess, even if, even if you accept that it is there, is there an inclination to possibly say, maybe it shouldn't be? I, the only thing I do remember is that there was robust discussion about it. And there was a lot of discussion about, should we really have a trail in front of people's houses? I do remember that, but I don't remember what the outcome was. So I'm relying on words and drawings, just like everyone else is.
And we have the drawings date. Do we have a specific date that the, that the PDD was codified or whatever?
Yep, this date, the November, uh, 2013.
So I just didn't know if the, if the drawings were November, but it wasn't codified until. So, I just didn't know if the, if the drawings were November, but it wasn't codified until...
No.
March of the next year or whatever.
February 1st, 2016 is at the bottom of the page.
What is that?
February 1st of 2016 is in our code book.
But it does, but it refers to the...
Yes.
And that revision is in 2017, right? The revision that the trail's got removed?
I've got, I've got December 3, 2015, resolution, approval to create Forbes Island Plan Development District and change the zoning certification of the resolution. It looks like it was December 3 of 15. And the reference plans are November 2015 plans and with the latest revision of January. So, there may have been some minor leaks that had to be done. And there's a, there's a CD in the file that is like, the CD of all the, the, the latest thing, final file was this. And there's the approval, manage the plans, they're all on PDD.
I, I think that in, in order for, for this property to close, if the board accepts the change, if this board accepts the change to the road situation tonight, then that would allow them to close and have a log description. It will still have the easement on it, because that's what this, what's on here and that's what this board, I think, is finding tonight, that certainly the easement is there. And then it can come up for an appropriate resolution or vote at an appropriate time and I'm sure that the owners would be happy to relinquish the easement.
Can't we change the right-of-way boundaries without a public hearing?
No, I think we need to...
Just the thing, moving aside walks and...
Moving the sidewalk.
Moving the right-of-way.
Yeah, we won't move the sidewalk.
Well, again, if this, if this property is gonna be added to the village, you've gotta, you've gotta accept, it's gonna become village property.
But does it need a public hearing to accept the village property?
I'm not sure either.
I don't know the answer.
We don't know either.
I'm not sure that it needs a public hearing for that, but I'll...
Because I'm sure we could go, could we go ahead and pass that resolution pending attorney approval of 18th, so that you can research it?
Yeah, we'll have two more meetings before...
Why don't we, why don't we get that out of the way?
Our, our, I'll just use, and anything that we do, the filing of them is the way it takes time. So, from a subdivision standpoint, even in the right-of-way, we can write an easement over that area right now, an ingress, egress easement going there, we can give easements. So, they can, the planning board can finalize the subdivision, the subdivision then goes to a title company, then they gotta go through all this title stuff for a closing, so, you know, the, you know, but then you have to have a comfortable buyer, like, you know, of what's going on, type of deal.
Are you saying do it later?
No, I'm not saying doing anything later. Like, if we have to have public hearings, like, I'm just trying to figure out the best timetable because talking with Rick Hollenbeck after he gets it, it's gotta go. And I'll just use, I'll, on the abstracts, so we've had abstracts here done. Because of the old canal that got filled in and title issue, you know, you, independent title did our first title for us. Steve Friddali was a guy there, he's passed away. So, we have a title report, so you hand it to another title company and they say, do they want to write title or not title? So, there's another title company that's gonna do it, it just, everything takes time and we're just trying to work with the type tables.
Essentially, it's not just a, it's not just a village signing up on it, once you guys do, it's gotta go to the health department. And then even once the lines are kind of firmed up, by the time they get all the easement descriptions done, they get a new map to us, we have a chance to review it and all that, it takes time. So, it can't be like a week before it's due, which is kind of too hard, you know, to go around the whole county and just say, "Hmm, follow that."
But we still have to follow our rules.
No, no.
So, and this is literally the first we've heard of this, so we're not trying to say, let's throw it down the road, but there's things that have to happen, there's things that have to happen.
And from the planning board meeting last, what, week where they made a resolution back to this board, we thought things were passed. We got maps.
We didn't.
We never got word of that.
I, I got copies of map on Friday, I came here and met Chuck here, and then I forwarded the, those maps to Chuck and to Greg to say, "Hey, take a review of these." After that, yeah.
I know.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
But I, I get it, no.
I'm not selling anything, I just wanted to give, I just wanted to give a timetable of where we were and what we tried to do.
And if we also...
We appreciate it.
It's, it's good, fast, but...
And for the right-of-way, ideally, if we're gonna have a public hearing for the right-of-way, we don't have to...
We're gonna approve the motion to move the right-of-way pending attorney review. That's, that's what I'm, and then Bob's gonna find out. Bob and Jamie will put their heads together and find out if you need a public hearing and if we do...
I'll, I'll second that motion.
You're...
And that's what I'm saying, but what I was saying is if we need a public hearing, I'd hate to do it like in a, a week before November 18th, because it just puts a lot of stress.
We're talking about being able to possibly do it at the next...
And that's all, and that's all on time, but it's quickly possible.
Right, because if Bob and Jamie can get the, get an answer to Jody by tomorrow, you could...
Too late tomorrow.
The next week, it can't be the typical standard, because the messenger's already closed for next week.
Oh, okay. So, if, if, rather than, in case, in case we come in and say, "Yeah, there needs to be a public hearing," they're on the side of doing a public hearing at the next meeting. It would be published and then we would cancel our, our special meeting of, of the planning board and just take it up at that next planning board meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. That issue. And the other one will try to, will hold pending discussion.
And, and, believe me, we, we sense the urgency that you have, but it's, there's things we just can't, just can't...
I understand that, it's, it's a public hearing that's required, you know, we understand those things.
Do, do we not want to have a public hearing on the other issue of the trail and put that out there, because we're gonna have to change our, that's written that way. To me, I don't see, I see it as pretty black and white there. That law says the trail's running along the river. For that PDD, that's what it says. It doesn't say it's cutting up its areas. It specifically says it's running along the river. You wanna play games with this any other way, like, that's what, that's written there. So, we might as well just have that public hearing, get this all done at once. That way, they know what they're getting exactly, the public has a chance to speak and we just kind of wrap that up.
And we should be able to have a public hearing next meeting, right? Can we get...
We could, like, we could...
But those are two separate issues. I wouldn't muddy the order by making it one public hearing.
No, we could do two public hearings.
Two public hearings.
Same night, but separate hearings.
Because I'm gonna hope that we don't need one for this right-of-way thing.
And have them start at 7:30 and not 7:35, like, the last time we scheduled one for some reason, so we had to wait an extra five minutes, or we could start our meeting.
Probably, maybe so.
And they only need to be three months apart.
Well, you want, what, table this motion that we got? We've already made a motion on the second, right?
Yeah, you table it, you would then need to make a motion to have a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, can somebody make a motion to have a public hearing for the October 19th meeting at 7:30? One public hearing to discuss the moving of the right-of-way 10 feet south on Lock Street and the other to discuss the right-of-way for the trail along the river.
And the amendment of the local law?
That amendment, that was, it's possible.
And possibly amending of the law. Somebody wanna make that motion? Those motions?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. And the first one, all in favor on the second?
Which is the second one?
Second one is the trail.
The trail.
Didn't know that, because I'd like to know what happened. We have a motion on the floor with this right-of-way thing.
Well, yes, we, we table that and, well, I need to table it, we can, if the attorney is gonna approve it.
It would like that to be a place that we don't need the public hearing.
Unfortunately...
It's approved.
We have to schedule a public hearing or now?
Yeah, and then you can cancel it, if Bob calls up, still gonna need it.
Right, okay.
So, we should vote on that first motion.
Yeah, sometime, yeah.
Still, still scheduled, still scheduled to be...
Okay, so we've got a motion to move the right-of-way on Lock Street 10 feet south, including the sidewalk. And we have a second, now that, all in, and based on, viewed by our attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's carried. Then we need a motion to schedule a public hearing for a discussion of the right-of-way along the river.
We still, you know, we're still gonna schedule a, a, one or two.
Yeah, we did schedule a, we did, we did, you voted yes.
Public hearing as to whether to retain the trail that was approved in 2015 along the river.
We did approve it, we did, everybody said, "Okay," so we're all set on that. We have two public hearings.
I think we, we still need a second one.
So, yeah.
For the, for the moving of the, the trail.
That's what I was saying, that's what I was saying. We still have that second one, so...
So, I give me a motion?
Do it.
Public hearing?
A motion for the...
Public hearing regarding the, the...
Walking trail.
The walking trail in the PDD, Forbes Island PDD.
Between lots five and 10.
Between lots five and 10.
Narrowed down.
We got a motion?
Yeah.
Now we need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, so we're scheduled to have two public hearings on the 19th.
And my office will drop off the appropriate maps tomorrow, seeing if we don't have copies of stuff, we'll give you a copy of the subdivision plat so you can see all the stuff. And then I will also contact the attorney who did stuff back in 2017 for their files, because attorneys are typically very good, taking up obvious notes.
Very good. Nice to see you, James. You got a run and a lull.
We tried to get a little profile.
All right, so we're down through...
C.
M, D, what else?
C, I think we did.
Thank you.
D is about...
D getting rid, Greg.
Oh, dang. Item D, you get that motion, Nate, you made?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to remove Greg Humphries from part-time employment within the Coles and the Village Ball.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'm gonna thank Greg for the work he gave us, appreciate his help, had a tough time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And item E is executive session. Before we go to executive session, anybody have any last comments for the public meeting? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for contractual matters? Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just messing, aye.